Call to order, the October 3rd, 2024, City of Newport Beach Planning Commission Meeting. Next item in business, Vice Chair Harris, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand.
Staff, roll call.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Secretary Celine and Commissioner Elmore, who are excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, our next item is public comments. This is the time we take public comments that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, seeing none. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests tonight.
Great. Next item are consent items. The first one is minutes of the September 5th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes of the September 5th, 2024 meeting? Okay, seeing none. Then would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll commend staff for having nothing that Mr. Moser could find wrong with the minutes and make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, let's call for a vote.
The motion carries 4-0 with Vice Chair Harris abstaining.
All right. Next item, our public hearing items. First one is item two, the Barnard Residence. This is PA 2023-0018. Site location is 3907 Seashore Drive. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, Chair. I just want to note that items two and three are very similar. And so Oscar Roscoe, our system planner, is going to go ahead and provide a presentation on item two. It's going to be a little bit more thorough. And then on item three, it'll be a more brief report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rosine and Commissioners. Oscar Roscoe here with the Planning Division, presenting a coastal development permit and a variance for the Barnard Residence. The property is located at 3907 Seashore Drive, adjacent to West Oceanfront and the public beach. And the property is also located in the VE flood zone. The VE flood zone is a zone on the peninsula between 24th Street and 48th Street, required to raise the minimum finished floor of the structures specifically to the base flood elevation. So the purple properties between 24th and 28th Street are VE flood zone 13, which means that the base flood elevation is 13. And those in yellow between 28th Street and 48th Street is VE zone 15, which means that the base elevation zone is 15 feet. The VE flood zone is a special flood hazard zone designated by FEMA that was, came into effect in March of 2019. And it requires that buildings be elevated to allow for an open design specifically for the water to move through and/or below the finished floor of the structure. As depicted in the image on the right, there is a 100-year stillwater elevation with the red dashed line, along with the 100-year wave crest elevation, with the requirement of a freeboard to allow for the water to freely move underneath the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member. And this creates some unique challenges for project designs. The city of Newport Beach is currently going through some changes, specifically because the code as it is written today limits fences, hedges, walls, and retaining walls to a maximum of 42 inches from existing grade in the front setbacks. And it limits the raising of grade, things like landings, patios, platforms, et cetera, in the side yard to 18 inches. So this really limits the access to the units from side and front setback areas. As previously mentioned, the city of Newport Beach is going through the process of amending the zoning code and the local coastal program. In June of 2023, the council adopted a Title 20 ordinance and authorized a coastal commission submission, for which the coastal commission has now deemed complete. And that local coastal program amendment is currently pending a hearing dates. These amendments will allow for, or will address access issues and will eliminate the need for future variances in this zone. This project is a coastal development permit, as previously mentioned, specifically to demolish an existing two-unit dwelling and construct a new three-story, 2,318-square-foot two-unit dwelling with a attached 444-square-foot garage and carport. Included in the project application is a variance for the overheight entry stairs in the fronts and the sides setbacks, as depicted in the site plan in your screen. The project as proposed complies with all development standards, including setbacks, height, floor area limitations, parking, and third-floor setbacks, with the exception of the requested variance for the overheight steps with guardrails in the side setback areas and the front setback area. The project is designed as required by the VE flood zone 15. In green, you'll see the existing grade for the property, with the base flood elevation of 15 as required by the VE flood zone. And included in that, above it, is the freeboard, which is required, and the finished floor of the project for this specific project is 17.25. We then take the height from that point. So for this R2 property, there's a height limit of 29 feet for sloped roofs. So in this particular case, the project is proposed to the maximum height limit. The variance request is for the entryway and side setback areas, highlighted here in yellow. This side entry stair is proposed at a top of landing of 4.25 feet above existing grade, with the addition of the 42-inch required safety guardrail above, which exceeds the 18-inch requirement or limitation in the side setback area, along with the maximum overall height exceeding the six-foot limitation for fences and walls. In addition, the front setback area here depicts the front balcony stairs that are also proposed, where they are limited to 42 inches in height from existing grade. It is proposed at 5.3 feet from existing grade for that top of railing. On the opposite side of the project, on the west elevation, there is one entry stair, as depicted in yellow, which is proposed identical to the one on the opposite side, which is 4.25 feet from existing grade, with the inclusion of the 42-inch high guardrail, which again, oops, excuse me, which again exceeds the overall six-foot height limitation for fences and walls, and exceeds the 18-inch limitation for steps in the side setback area. Some key findings for the project. The project is required to be raised per the VE flood zone. Therefore, providing internal stairs would reduce the livable floor area for the project. In addition, the stairs that are being provided include some direct access to the beach and are being designed with open guardrails to help reduce visual impact. And those guardrails are oriented to run along the sides of the staircases so that they don't directly face the street. In addition, the proposed design complies with the pending local coastal program amendments. In addition, the coastal development permit, key findings include vertical access, which is available along the 39th and 40th Street ends. And the project is not proposing to reduce or limit any of that vertical access, with inclusion of lateral access, which is available along the beach. The project does not include a design that would limit that. And lastly, the project is proposed at a height for which the limitation of 29 feet is being met and not exceeded. Therefore, there isn't any concern over the visual impacts of the project. Staff is recommending we conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt Resolution Number PC 2024-021, approving that coastal development permit and variance. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Vice Chair Harris?
Thank you for your presentation. Any ballpark on when we'll get our hearing with coastal?
I'll answer that. No, so their deadline runs through the end of next spring. We have, I think, about seven different amendments, and so they're just prioritizing them right now. So my guess, it'll be sometime March or April of next year.
Any other questions, staff? I had just a real quick question. In regard to the three feet clear, was there a stair on both sides of this building? And is that, is the three-foot clear not required then at that point?
Yeah, so our code just requires that there's emergency access from the front to the rear, and so use of the stairs is allowable.
Oh, stairs, okay, got it. Any other questions for staff? All right. Then Commissioners, any ex parte communications, starting with Mr. Barco?
None.
None for me?
None.
None.
All right. Well, then, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
My name is Ron Rittner, R-I-T-N-E-R. I'm the architect on the project. I'm just making myself available for any questions. That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Just, I'm just curious, from a practical standpoint, the stairs on the side yard are, run the whole width from the property line to the building, is my understanding. And if there was a wall that was put up between that and the neighbor, there seems to be kind of space underneath those stairs, because the stairs allow for the water to pass through it, so it's kind of like this dead zone. Is there any way to, like, access that? Or what, just practically speaking?
The stairs are required to be an open design by nature. I mean, the whole idea of this is that the water can flow through there, right? So there's nothing you can really do to enclose that space. Your question regarding fire access is a relevant one, so part of the requirements is that the stairs have to be constructed in a certain way, so that they're durable enough for fire access and suppression and whatnot. But they, they're obligated to be open. There's really nothing we can do other than just try and make it pretty, you know, little garden or something. But obviously, these two things are in tension, right? The FEMA requirements and the need to access, you know, the front door of the house. So staff will be glad, I'm sure, when they don't have to deal with this on every one of those 250 lots, right?
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Rittner, have you reviewed the conditions of approval, and if you gain approval, are you in agreement with them?
Yeah, I meant to say, yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item?
Chair Rosine, members of the commission, my name is Jim Moser. I don't think it's relevant to your decision, but I did notice in reading the staff report that the figure two, identifying where the subject property is, seems to be pointing to an inland property. I don't think it's the one we're talking about. Also, when I saw the plan, like the chair, I believe at some of your previous meetings, there had been concern about access, and especially with the stairs on both sides. So my only comment about this, and I guess the following item also, it is implied, but I haven't heard it clearly stated, and it's not clearly stated in the staff report, should the coastal commission concur and accept the revisions that we have pending with them? Would this design be completely compliant with the proposed revision? Or would it still require some kind of modification or variance from them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Are there any more speakers that would like to come up? Okay, seeing none. Staff, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chair Rosine. Yeah, just on Mr. Moser's last comment as to whether or not the project design would be compliant with the amendments to the local coastal program, that is correct. They would.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Would anyone like to, any comments? Or a motion?
Thanks for this diagram. The side of the project diagram really shows, helps, you know, kind of walk everyone through this. This is the new normal. I think there's going to be some growing pains of, you know, some oddball stuff as we go, but this is where we are. I'll make a motion to approve 24, 120, 1295, or no, sorry, PA 223-3018.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Next item, item number three, Newport Beach Homes LLC. This is PA 2024-0121. Site location is 3203 West Oceanfront. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Give us one second.
Yeah, Chair Rosine, I need to recuse myself on this item. My employer owns a property nearby, in part.
Thank you, Commissioner Langford. Staff?
Yes, Chair Rosine. I just want to introduce, I'm sorry.
I guess we got to hold, please.
I just want to introduce Assistant Planner Danny Kaffschefer. He's, this is his first time presenting to the commission today.
This project is for a coastal development permit and variance at 3202 Oceanfront West. It's between 33rd Street and 32nd Street. Project is also within the 15-foot VE flood zone, as previously discussed in the first, the second agenda item. The project is for a coastal development permit to demolish an existing one-story, 867-square-foot, single-unit dwelling and detached two-car garage, and to construct a new three-story, 2,634-square-foot, single-unit dwelling with a 376-square-foot attached two-car garage, and for a variance for the overheight entry stairs, highlighted in yellow, in the side and front setback areas. The project complies with all other development standards, just with the exception of the two entryway stairs. Project's been designed to comply with the 15-foot VE flood zone, so we have the existing grade. Breakaway material is designed up to that base flood elevation of 15 feet. Freeboard, and then the finished floor elevation of 17.25 feet in this case. And the maximum height of the building is 29 feet, measured from that finished floor. The front setback entry stairs have 3.35 feet to the top of landing from the existing grade. And in the side setback, the entry stairs have 5.5 feet to the top of the landing from the existing grade. These are both on the east elevation, so just stairs on just one side of the house in this project. And both stairways have a 42-inch guardrail, in addition to the heights mentioned. So this project is for a variance to permit the overheight stairs, and it's appropriate as this project is within the 15-foot VE flood zone. The stairs provide access to the house, which is on a raised foundation for the requirements of the VE flood zone, and relocating the stairs into the interior of the house would reduce available floor area. And for the coastal development permit, vertical access on the 32nd and 33rd Street ends are still available and won't be impacted by the project, nor will there be lateral access to the beach impacted by the project, and nor is there going to be any impact to visual, to the visual integrity of the coastal zone, as this is updating an existing single-unit dwelling with a new single-unit dwelling with a contemporary design, and it's within the allowable height. Recommend conducting the public hearing, finding the project exempt from SEQA to Class III of the SEQA guidelines, and adopt Resolution PC 2024-022. That'll conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, any ex parte communication?
None.
None for me as well?
None.
None.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or comment?
Hi, I'm David Delatoso. I'm the architect and applicant. Thank you, Danny. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm available for questions. I've reviewed the conditions of approval and have no issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Guess I kind of skipped if anybody else wanted, any Commissioners wanted to. All right, preempted you there. Okay, then, anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item? All right, then, I guess, staff, any comments for the record? Sounds like no. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion or action. Do we have anybody that wants to comment or maybe make a motion?
I'll make a motion to find the project exempt from SEQA, since 15303, and adopt Resolution PC 2024-022, plus the CDP element.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, let's call for a vote. Congratulations to the applicant. Next item, item number four. This is the Caide, if I've pronounced that right, Cafe and Wine Bar. This is PA 2024-0074. Site location is, oh, do we want to, Mr. Langford, Commissioner Langford's back, thank you. Site location is 2300 Newport Boulevard. This is in the McFadden Square area of the Balboa Peninsula. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Chair Rosine. Jaime Murillo, Deputy Director. I'll be presenting this item on behalf of our contract principal planner, Rosalind Hung, who manages the project. This request is for a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit for a property called Peninsula Village, which is a mixed-use development. Specifically, this application includes several requests. One is to allow for the addition of a new restaurant, which would be a 932-square-foot cafe and wine bar type establishment with a type 41 beer and wine license within the development. Additionally, the property owner is requesting some increased flexibility regarding the restrictions on the use of their slips. They would like to have the ability to lease the slips to either residents, commercial tenants, or to members of the public associated with those two components. There is an increased parking demand per our code, which results in a request for a 23-space parking reduction. And as part of that, they've developed a new parking management plan. So this is a vicinity map of the project location. As you can see, it's near the Newport Pier, within the McFadden Square area of the city, facing the bay. Just a little bit of background, the project was originally approved back in 2006 under the name Newport Bay Marina. Since changed ownership a number of times, the previous development was called View Newport, and now it's Peninsula Village. Consists of several three-story buildings, over a subterranean parking garage, with a total of 27 units, approximately 35,000 square feet of retail and office-type uses and restaurant, and 234 onsite spaces. With regards to the Marina, when the project was originally approved back in 2006, the consisted of 19 slips, those slips were allowed to be leased to the public as well as to restaurants. So there was no restrictions on the leasing of those slips. However, in 2017, the Planning Commission did approve a use permit to allow two new restaurants within the development. That required a parking waiver as well, and as part of the parking management plan for those approvals, the use of the slips were restricted. And so it's currently allowed, seven of the slips are allowed to be leased to the public, 10 are to be leased to residents of the development, and two slips are required to be open and available for the public to use, free of charge. Additionally, there's a slipway, which you can see on the lower left-hand side in the middle of the development. That allows for short-term small boat mooring, so if someone wants to visit the site, like on a Duffy, that's a place for them to pull up. Those two restaurants I mentioned are located on this exhibit here. So there was a casual-type restaurant, which is Shorebird, was it Shorebird? Yeah, on that lower left. And then, actually, that's the fine dining, right? The Shorebird's on the upper right-hand side, and then there's more of a casual dining. It's going to be a new tenant now. And then this proposed wine bar is shown with that green highlight. So for this proposed request, overall, there's not too many changes to the development as a whole. There's no changes in square footage, in expansion of use, other than the request to allow for this additional restaurant, which is 932 square feet, and then the request to allow more flexibility with regards to the use of the slips. And that would allow the property owner to lease them to residents, commercial tenants, or to the public. This is an exhibit showing the location of the wine bar. Again, 932 square feet, just typical small restaurant with hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, no late hours, live entertainment. They tend to have breakfast-type options and then light lunch and dinner. This is a floor plan of the proposed restaurant. So in orange, you'll see the indoor net public area. It's approximately 306 square feet, so that's customer area. And then shaded in green is the proposed outdoor area, and that consists of a maximum of 368 square feet of net public area. So in terms of parking, when you take into account the increased demand from the restaurant, changing from retail restaurant, that's 15 additional spaces. And then to allow for the flexible use of the slips, that adds a requirement for eight more spaces, bringing the requirement to a total of 257. However, there's only 234 parking spaces onsite, resulting in a 23-space waiver. They have prepared a parking analysis that does take into account the existing operation of the uses, peak parking demand, and then the full impact of these proposed uses. And it actually shows that the anticipated peak parking demand is actually 219 spaces. So it does show there's adequate spaces onsite to accommodate the change in use. In addition, they are amending their existing parking management plan. So there's no change in allocation of spaces that's allowed to be used for residents and commercial users. Valley parking will be required when needed, and it's when that, I believe it's 90% of the spaces are utilized, valley is going to be required. They are providing additional bike racks and parking signage to help provide wayfinding and show which spaces are available. There are some security improvements that have been added, and with that, there's a grace period, so if you pull in the garage, there's some time to allow patrons to exit without paying. And so, in summary, the key findings in support of this is that the restaurant is a considered visitor-serving use, consistent with the general plan and local coastal program designation for the site. The restaurant itself is compatible within this mixed-use environment. There's no late hours, no dancing, live entertainment, so shouldn't really create a disturbance to the residents within the project. As mentioned, the parking analysis show there's adequate parking onsite to accommodate the demand for the change in use. Police Department has reviewed the application and is supportive with the conditions of approval that have been included in your draft resolution. And in terms of coastal access, there's no changes to the slips in terms of physical construction, and no changes in view impacts. There is public access easements within the development that are going to be unaffected by this proposal. And with that, staff recommends approval and recommends that the commission find this exempt from SEQA under a Class I exemption and adopt the resolutions. I do want to just note that Mr. Moser did identify an error in Condition Number 17, and so we do need to revise Condition 17 to prohibit construction. and so we do need to revise condition seventeen to prohibit construction on Saturdays. And that concludes my presentation. Wendy Jo from our police department is in attendance and available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murillo. Appreciate that. Great presentation. I guess, staff or commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Langford?
Thank you, Chair Rosin. Deputy Director Murillo, we amended the parking standards last year, so I was curious whether the new standards would result in a gain or loss of parking requirements, were they to be administered here?
Good question. I don't have an answer. My guess is it would still have required a parking waiver, so the change in the standards wouldn't result in a reduction of that number, so.
Okay. And then I got my second question, condition number forty-eight, that's the ninety percent threshold that triggers the valet. So I was curious, just from a practical standpoint, what the mechanism is for, you know, figuring out if it's ninety percent, if it's that day, or if it's like a trailing twelve months of it's ninety percent, or if it's something code enforcement is going to figure out if there's a complaint or if it's something that the property owner knows to look out for and needs to make sure he's staying under that ninety percent.
Yes, I'll go ahead and answer that. Brad Summers, your city transportation manager. The ninety percent was really meant for them to self-monitor, and of course, the city can step in and evoke this if necessary. My understanding is they will be hiring a parking management company that will help them keep tabs on this as well.
Yeah, and it looked fine to me, but because of all the vacancy, it seems like in the parking study, they were, you were assuming, you know, full occupancy and all of the spaces being taken, but we probably won't find out for a while whether it's going to be underparked, overparked, all that stuff. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? I did have one quick question, and I guess it's really just a clarification from staff. If any of these, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time, but if any of these commercial tenants chose to use a slip for a commercial use, would that be allowed based on what we're looking at here?
Now, so the intent of the approval is to allow them to lease it to a resident upstairs or to a commercial operator, but it's really to park a boat, if that's the right term, berth the boat. But if the tenant wanted to have like a boat rental business or a charter business, that's not in line with what we're authorizing within this approval. And so that wouldn't be in substantial conformance with the project as presented.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Any ex parte communication?
I spoke with a representative of the ownership.
I also spoke with a representative of the applicant.
I met with the applicant and walked the project.
None.
I spoke with the applicant.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning. You've got a new clicker. We'll see how this goes tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to thank city staff for working with us on this project. Members of planning staff and public work staff worked very hard with our team, and we appreciate their efforts. Okay, great, it works. So relieved. So here's the project site. It's outlined in green. You can see the land side and then also the marina component on the water. As Jaime indicated in his very thorough presentation, Peninsula Village is an existing mixed-use project, twenty-seven residential units, approximately thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial uses, and a nineteen-slip marina. Tonight, we're requesting a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit. This is for the conversion of an existing retail space, nine-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet, to restaurant space, to remove the restriction on the ten existing, that should say resident-only, marina slips, to be available to the general public, tenants and residents. A parking waiver to reduce the parking requirement by twenty-three spaces, and also a parking management plan. The Kade space, oh, did I? Oh, man, this clicker. I found the back button. Okay, I knew this was going to go sideways on me. Here we go. The Kade Cafe, so this is nine-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet, including three-hundred-and-six square feet of net public area and a three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-square-foot patio. The hours would be seven AM to ten PM daily. This is coffee, small-plated food, beer and wine only, no late hours, no live music or dancing. And you see in the start area, this is the location. It is centrally located on the ground floor in the existing courtyard. Okay, so the parking analysis was based on an assumption of one-hundred percent occupancy. The peak parking demand was determined to be two-hundred-and-nineteen spaces. There are two-hundred-and-thirty-four spaces provided, so that's a surplus of fifteen spaces during the peak period. And let me quickly answer Commissioner Langford's questions. The bars at the parking gates, you know, the arm that goes up and down, those have sensors in them that provide real-time feedback on the parking. So at all times, the parking consultant, who's already been retained, will know exactly how many parking stalls are occupied at any one time, and then they can activate the valet system as necessary. So that real-time monitoring, I think, will be very helpful to make sure that if there is a demand over ninety percent, we can still comply with condition forty-eight. And then, would you remind me of your other question, please? Oh, I think you had asked about the code, and whether the code changes would have changed the parking requirements here. So I'd like to remind the commission that the parking changes to the city's municipal code were not implemented yet in the coastal zone. Those are pending Coastal Commission approval. The parking analysis was first done based on those reduced standards, because the parking consultant wasn't aware that they were not in effect in the coastal zone. So based on that initial report, we wouldn't have needed a parking waiver. That was not provided to city staff for their review or confirmation, and that report did change several times. But between the reduced parking rates and also the director's ability to reduce up to twenty percent of the parking requirement without a parking waiver, I believe that we would not be here tonight asking for this if those rules were in effect. And with that, I will let you know, Chair Rosin, that the applicant has reviewed all of the conditions of approval, and they are in agreement with them, and we request your approval tonight, consistent with the staff recommendation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schaffner. Does that include the revision to condition seventeen?
Yes, thank you, including the revision to prohibit Saturday construction.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers?
Chair Rosin, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Moser. Regarding the requested parking adjustment, on handwritten page thirty-one is the relevant portion of the resolution. The explanation of the parking regarded by, required by the restaurant, which is fact number two, I could not make heads or tails of the first sentence of that, because I think inadvertently there's a word missing. I think it's explaining how you figure parking for the outdoor dining area. I think it's trying to say that you count the interior net public area and then include the outdoor dining area less twenty-five percent of the interior NPA or one-thousand square feet. I think the word "less" is missing from that sentence. And then the more substantive comment I have is about the following two conditions about the change in the boat slips. Fact number three is describing the current configuration, which has seven leased to the general public slips, two free to the public, and seven that are for residents only. Did I correct that? No, no. Seven to the general public, two available free to the public, and ten rented to the residents only. And then on the next page, fact number four, it's saying that we're changing the lease structure to go to all nineteen, total of nineteen, by adding ten. I believe to get from the seven that are leased to the public to the nineteen, that means that we're leasing the ten that are currently restricted to the residents, plus the two that were free to the public. So I think to get from, to get up to the number of a total of nineteen, the request is to allow the ten resident-only boat slips and the two free-to-the-public slips to be changed to be leased to the general public. And I'm sure I didn't say that clearly, but the two that are currently free, that the fact that this is considering only the ten that are resident-only, when they're resident-only, apparently the logic is that they don't create a parking demand, because the owner of the boat is already there. So we're considering the worst case, that they might be leased out to somebody who has no connection to the mixed-use center at all, create a parking demand. The two that are currently free, it seems to me, are not for general boat storage. The assumption when that was approved was those would be visitors to the center wanting to come there. So they're accessing it and leaving from the water. They're not creating a parking demand. So those, there are the ten for the residents and the two free ones, that's twelve that are creating a new parking demand, not just the ten. And so the time is up, and the only other comment I would make is in the conditions of approval on page number thirty-five, condition six A is now saying that all nineteen can now be leased to the general public, not necessarily associated with the center. I would think it's important somewhere to add in here the clarification that Deputy Director Murillo stated, which is that in that leasing, if it is to a commercial entity and they're using it for a commercial purpose, that that lease might be, or the use might be subject to additional permitting under our city codes and might require additional permitting. Shouldn't that be stated in here somewhere? And not that they just have permission commercially to lease it and use it for whatever they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Are there any further speakers this evening on this item? Then, staff, do you have any comments in response?
Yes, so we'll go through the final version of the resolution and just make sure we catch those inconsistencies that Mr. Moser mentioned in the findings. And then regarding the restrictions, there are additional restrictions, so if there's going to be commercial use of the slips, our municipal code does require that they obtain a marine activities permit, which is, we call it a MAP. We have conditions that say that they have to comply with all other applicable codes and ordinances, so it's not necessary. But if the commission wishes to add a specific condition, you're free to do so.
Okay. I guess then, if there's nothing else, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners, any conversation here? I actually have a comment, that I like the idea of adding a condition that clearly specifies that if there is a commercial venture, that it needs to have, and I'll let staff figure out a way to word this, but basically that it needs to be accounted for or another, an application would need to be made, or something to that effect.
Yeah, we can go ahead and put together a condition to address that.
Thank you. Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, Chair Rosin, just thinking about this, I appreciate this project coming through in the peninsula. It kind of, I'm also reminded by our recent, like, trolley conversation at the city level, how we're going to expand that. And it's not part of what the parking program, you know, and the traffic study doesn't say any of that, but I think that's going to help this project. I'm sure there's going to be a trolley stop nearby, so I think it's going to help move people around. Same thing with adding all the bicycle parking spots. Because I'm looking at this as just, kind of, parking is going to be the issue, but alleviating those with these, I think, is going to be important. So I'm liking the project.
Commissioner Langford, any other comments? Vice Chair Harris?
Yeah, this project's kind of had a bumpy road, and I kind of commend the applicant for, you know, really taking this thing and trying to make it a sustainable project and investing the money and the time and the effort. It's been a bear, I believe. And concerning the parking, I think the time of use solves it. The ticketing mechanisms discourage people from abusing it. And then also, we have the, you know, if there are issues, valet, I think that solves it. You know, this parking standard on a lot of our businesses in that area would be a very tough standard to meet, and I don't think most businesses could hit it, so I think it's in addition to the area. The slips are the other big issue. You know, the slipway in the middle is going to maintain public use fully, which was kind of a big deal for me. I think most people use Duffys in our community to dine and leave. And the requirement for tenants or renters there to only be able to use it is kind of silly to me. You know, not everyone has a boat, and there's no reason with the demand we have in our harbor to have empty slips. So I think that freedom makes sense, and obviously with the economics at this time in our harbor, it's helpful for the applicant. So I'm in support and would make a motion to approve.
All excellent points. Thank you. I did hear a motion. Do we want to have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Go ahead and call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to the next item. Item five, motions for reconsideration. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item six is a report by the Community Development Director for items before the Planning Commission or future agenda.
Yes, Chair Rosin. Jaime Murillo, Deputy Director, I just want to note that we have no items for the next Planning Commission meeting, so we're going to go ahead and cancel the next meeting in October.
Thank you very much. I believe does any, our guest, has anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? Seeing none, then... Oh, thank you. Mr. Moser?
Yeah, I just have a question. The helpful handout that appears at the meetings now has what looked like a bunch of hyperlinks in it, with items underlined, like status, more info, something you could click on. Since this comes out at the time of the meeting, I tried downloading the PDF on a portable device I have, and the links didn't seem to actually be links, so is this intended to be active links if you download that copy, or is it just a copy of something that works internally? That's the question.
Yes, I can go ahead and answer that. So we've kind of shifted from maintaining a Word document of our tentative schedule, and we're leveraging our software that we use for managing permits throughout the city, and so we've been able to create an automated agenda. However, those hyperlinks are for internal staff purposes only.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then, our last item. All right, then, our last item is a request for excused absences. Commissioners, any requests for excused absences? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.